Yeah, yeah. I'll tell her it's not be, it's not be. Because he, he was, that one being good for us.
He said, he said.
You know, the time, it's got, it's got sprung. So she, she moved and stuff, she wasn't. Yeah.
He said you were.
He was so. That's right here.
And they did it.
Okay. You know, when they open them up, they do two, listen to it. I mean, they say all. That's what it is.
Yeah. Well, this is how it should have happened. And the bar, the party bar.
I know we, we bought. Like every time. I saw, I saw a boy on the corner.
Nope. We know. He generated three thousand dollars with the sales tax in four days. I said, well, that's thirty thousand dollars. He said, this is returned away.
So yeah, we always pack. Because they said upper foot, you need to go.
That's what he said he said. He said, hey, but he said, I'm sorry, I didn't do something else. And then put a negative review on it.
Yeah.
Good. We was in that Friday and a group of twenty people coming there. Some business. They only had thirty minutes for lunch. He told all the people, he said, I'm sorry, I can't serve you. And he said, I'd rather do that as him be here an hour. And then last minute, maybe a guy took the.
I talked to a friend back in the chat room. He said, they were like, what?
I told him Jerry yesterday, he was telling me while I was down there telling me.
Every other week.
Yeah, he told me to do it first, and he said he had a business. They're already saving value, they're low spirit cheese, they said. He said, he told the guys, he said, I've had clothes in this place now. A big saving value. They said, yeah, I mean, two grand. And he said, it was shut by saying, it's no saving value.
Oh, my goodness. Only Jay, three jacket out.
It is. Yeah. Well, did you, have you had a feeling about your board meeting?
It went good. It went good. I, I had to leave before they left.
We'll see, we're getting used to it.
They were into the specifics.
I admit, at least.
And her son, she comes and tells her new business. She said more than once, she said. She said, I've got to get rid of. I do a restaurant for a guy. It's like, you said, it looks just like this.
It's my favorite partnership.
This is it.
You could be a god.
Not this hard.
So she was, her first, and they went to the kitchen and all the stuff.
It's a nice and difficult. So I went, I went with somebody. He's been in the field, he's started baseball.
If I can have your, if I can have your attention, we'll open up our last public hearing at six twenty-five. And this public hearing is in reference to amendments to twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year budget. Is anyone here in the audience that needs to address counsel about this amendment to the fiscal year budget? Okay, not hearing any? We will close that public hearing and open our regular meeting up at six thirty. Yeah.
So I think.
Still alive, by the way.
That's right. And I'm good. I did have work today. She'll be, she goes, and then get out of the water. Yeah. She'll make those, the next three days. It'll be all right. I said, this is what, it's not good.
He says seventy years.
Prosper.
Yeah, so much is missing now. But there's nothing going. I'm waiting for.
He used to do this kind of move. It's right here. Mom's right.
You can wait this.
She, she, she had.
You can shoot your sister down.
Something.
I totally demand this out.
She was in France with actual horse by a citizen, PhD. I mean, she don't even have a, she don't have a flag. We should have. He said, yeah, I was having a lot of things last week. So all that, he said, that guy come here, he was lax above.
I think it's, it's a hurricane.
Well, I think it's already forever. Two thousand. He's paying for it.
I'm just putting out tonight.
He tells me that he's. He says that she, that that.
Land that's a record that's.
Yeah. It's like her paper.
Yeah, it said, she's got sixty-five things. That gives you the other thing.
Yeah, she said, everything is gonna be like, if the ice machine does that, I think that's part of the bill. The ice machine does that, I'd be asking five years. And it's not even a machine. She said, I'm.
She told me sixty things on the list.
I hope they can work that out. I think, I think she was gonna work it to do. Her son, we're like, we're getting. She said, he dated Tom sixteen dollar. Said that.
We've told you.
Yeah.
My.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was garbage.
So he said that he really liked.
I guess it's. Usually I forget.
You probably make classes.
For. Question. My team. You know, right here.
We're gonna take a picture first.
Watch the ceiling, guys.
Thank you.
Oh, Larry's. This Loudon High School neighborhood junior OTC.
Have you?
That's hot, thank you. All right, stay right there. Here's a token. Loudon City, thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Top, I got one for you.
Please, sir.
Thank you for your service, sir. Yes, sir. I'll just give him a hand. Okay, we want to call our Loudon City Council meeting, April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, to order. Uh, we have a special guest tonight, good friend of mine, Reverend Brian Courtney, First Baptist Church, Philadelphia. Appreciate Brian, your service through our community and to our ward. Um, me and Brian go back a long way. He can tell stories on me, I can tell stories on him. So we were neighbors together and played a lot of basketball out in the backyard. So thank you, Brian, been friends for a long time, appreciate your service. And as I mentioned, we have the Naval Junior R O Reserve Officers Training Corps from Loudon High School. They do a, an excellent program there. Thank you, Top, for bringing them. And it's, it's an opportunity that we have to highlight them and what they do. So we're gonna ask that everyone stand for the invocation after that, and then the calling. Courtney.
Just a prayer. Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for the day because it sure has been pretty. We want to thank you for the gift of your son. We want to thank you for the life that he offers us. We also want to thank you, Father, for Loudon City Council. For these folks who have been elected by this council or this city to serve. We know, Father, serving sometime is not easy. It can be hard and tough. So we pray that you give them a little grace. Give them a little strength, courage, clear thinking. Help them to do their job to the best of their abilities and maybe even beyond their abilities. Sometimes you can take a lot of things and do very much with it. Thank you, Father, for what they do. And tonight, during this meeting, may they accomplish all that would be in the good service of Loudon. And basically, that's why we're all here, really. We want Loudon to be the best that it can be. May that come true. Thank you for everyone who was in attendance here. Thank you so much for your love and grace. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Order. Arm. Oh, work. Hurt. Colors. Hold. Our. Colors. Ready. Cut. Left. Face. Attention. Salute. Pledge. Colors. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Our. Colors. Ready. Cut. Left. Face. Forward. Back. Oh, work. Hurt. I'm sure as Manager Ross can attest to, it's a great program.
Absolutely.
Right. Thank them for their. Being here tonight. Roll call, please.
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dixon.
Here.
Councilmember Cardwell.
Here.
Councilmember Newman.
Here.
Councilmember Webb.
Here.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming to the monthly meeting of the Loudon City Council. My name is Mayor Jeff Harrison, I'd like to welcome everyone to our meeting tonight. Tennessee law gives every Tennessee the right to attend city council meetings and to see how their government does business. We appreciate that each of you taking time out of your own personal schedules in order to be here tonight to see how your city government works. It's my intention as your chair that we create a space where everyone feels seen, heard, respected, and valued. Should have a copy of tonight's agenda, if you do not have a copy, you can pick one up on the table at the back of the room. This agenda is your guide to the topics we'll be discussing tonight. In order to conduct efficient businesslike meetings, the council has adopted some specific rules to follow. Parmella, these rules are designed to keep the meeting moving, assure that all points of view are heard and considered, and to provide for common courtesy. In a few minutes, we'll come to the place on the agenda entitled Citizens Input, where anyone who has signed in to speak to council is encouraged to do so. We do ask however that you wait until you've been recognized before you address counsel. After being recognized, we ask that you follow three simple rules. At the beginning of your presentation, please state your name for the records, address all your questions to the chair, and avoid the use of improper language, profanity, or any other inappropriate conduct. Once the citizens input portion of the meeting is over, the council will proceed with the remainder of the agenda. You are welcome to stay and observe the meeting, but be advised that any additional comment will be limited to three minutes each at the discretion of city council. We asked everyone, remember, we're doing the people's business here tonight, which is a very important responsibility for all of us. You can help us do this business by observing the rules we've established. Again, welcome to the meeting of the Loudon City Council, glad you're here tonight. Next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. I think we have.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make an addition to the agenda. Um, after council member reports and prior to closing comments, that we conducted an executive session.
Okay, we have a motion to add an executive session to the agenda, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion to second, any questions about the addition? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I make a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, motion to second, any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Our agenda is currently adopted. Next item is citizens input, did anyone sign in to speak? Is there anyone here that would like to address counsel? During citizens input time? Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from a regular meeting, March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Mayor Harris, I was not at that meeting, but I have reviewed the minutes and I ask that they be adopted.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from March twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have several, uh, three or four ordinance on second reading. Uh, we will be taking roll call votes here. So the first one, after our second public hearing, is to permit designation of handicap parking at or near five oh three College Street. The information in that is in your packet, I think we all know where that is, Compton Presbyterian Church. What's the pleasure of counsel? Make a motion to approve. Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion to second to permit the designation of handicap parking at five oh three College Street, any questions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cardwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dixon.
Aye.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Mayor Harris.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Next item is to establish the speed limit on Queen of Road, Hampton Play Circle, Stone Creek Drive, Mill Creek Drive, Cedar Park Drive, and those streets. And the, uh, recommended speed limits are listed in your packet there. It's fifteen mile speed limit going forward except for Queen of Road, which is twenty-five mile. The pleasure of counsel.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
A second.
Motion to second to approve the speed limits listed on these streets. Any questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Cardwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dixon.
Aye.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Mayor Harris.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Next ordinance is prohibiting parking of a section of Highway seventy-two North and on Elizabeth Lee Parkway. We discussed this, you know, in the workshop thoroughly. And, um, these are some that would help the police department, um, deal with some of the complaints that's, uh, out there in that area of town. What's the pleasure of counsel?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, do we have a second?
A second.
Motion is second, any questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Cardwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dixon.
Aye.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Mayor Harris.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Last ordinance on second reading is amending the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year budget. City reporter Melissa Huston has identified a list, a list of these amendments and act, anticipated actual expenditures. What's the pleasure of counsel?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, second?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Newman, any questions about the amendments?
Just for the record, was one addition sent to the workshop?
Yes, there was an addition of fifteen thousand dollars for a block safety camera support.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions? Any other questions about the budget amendments? Okay, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Dixon.
Aye.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Councilmember Cardwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Mayor Harris.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Those have been all approved on second reading. Now, resolutions, we have several of those before us tonight. Uh, the first one is authorizing strategic planning session by M T A S. Manager Ross, I would you, is there any questions or any discussions about that? Would either add?
Yeah, um, at the workshop two weeks ago, um, M T A S, uh, sent Angie Carrier, who's a management consultant with M T A S. M T A S is the Municipal Technical Advisory Service of University of Tennessee. They offer various consulting services to local governments, including, uh, strategic planning services. Uh, this agreement, um, would authorize M T A S to engage with the city of Loudon and calendar, um, a strategic planning session, looking at a two-day session, uh, perhaps in the form of a retreat. Uh, we would see that that strategic planning take place in the, the first quarter of next fiscal year.
Okay. We have, we have interacted with Angie Carrier on several, those of us that have been on council, so M T A S will do a good job, I think.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve, uh, the authorization of strategic planning session at M T A S, any questions about that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, um, resolution is acceptance of the proposal of the Tennessee Department of Transportation to construct a project designated state project. Remember, you see the numbers there? I don't have to list all those. You can see how long that is. But this, we know this is, uh, in reference to the Malibu boats across from the, the Sugar Loom Industrial Park. So, um, our, uh, E D A Director Jack Qualls presented this contract documents for us at the workshop. Uh, Ty, you have any clarification other than what we've had listed here? You see the financial commitment from the city?
Just, um, this is a, an annual list, and it's, it's specifically approved and the, uh, we did add some provisions, uh, to the resolution. It's like Project dealer. We're still on Project dealer, right? Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Project dealer is, um, a, uh, S I A, it's, it's economic development grant from, uh, T dot. And when we're fortunate enough to have a, a, a large business come into town, or, uh, in this case, an industrial expansion out by Malibu. If the requisite investment is there, and if the requisite number of jobs are created, then it opens up the door for T dot grants to make improved, uh, infrastructure improvements for that project. This infrastructure improvement would be, uh, the construction of a new intersection, uh, at the, at the entrance of the Sugar Loom Industrial Park. And what would become the entrance to the, to a new Malibu factory across Highway eleven. Uh, this intersection will include signalization, uh, as well. And our only responsibility, uh, in this project is right away. And that's approximately seventy thousand dollars that we have to pay upfront to T dot to kick off the project. So this would, this would authorize that.
That's basically what we're voting on tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that the city of Loudon accepts the proposal.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Have a motion and a second to accept this proposal of the T dot, uh, construction project designated state project, the numbers listed here in the resolution. Any questions?
Yeah, so it's, uh, seventy thousand dollars, and it will come out of the Sugar Loom Fund?
Yes.
And so we have enough in there to cover it?
Yes.
Okay, and it, and it will be on next year's budget, or is it coming out of this year's money?
It was included, included in the budget amendment.
So it's coming out of this year's fund balance?
Okay. Which was on the budget amendment we just approved?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other questions or discussions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, now, authorizing the agreement with the Loudon County Chamber of Commerce, this is, uh, authorize the execution of an agreement with the chamber for another year of the downtown planning services. Manager Ross, did you say there was a change to this document?
There's a change to the document, um, in, based, based on feed, feedback from prior meetings from, from the, from this new council, is that a quarterly report, uh, being made in, in, in addition to the, uh, what's listed in previous, in the previous agreement. This agreement would extend it for another year. We use the Chamber of Commerce as a, as a conduit, and the Chamber of Commerce in turn, um, contracts with, um, this Kathy Price, who's here this evening. And she, she runs a consulting business helping, uh, various local government matters. But, um, the, the conduit method, um, is, is, we think is useful, uh, for at least another year. Um, they have downtown meeting space, uh, for downtown merchants, and, um, and offer, uh, the, the convenience of, of, of that location, as well as the, the, the experience and lessons learned from helping facilitate, uh, Lenora City's Downtown Association.
I think that was mentioned quarterly reports, and according to Kathy, that's, that's not an issue at all, and that's like, very easy to do. And we're on the, we're on the cusp of getting ready to, uh, start the Tennessee downtown, uh, application process. So I think it's just pivot, pivotal that we, we keep Kathy in that role to help us with that transition, uh, that we go to, so.
Mr. Mayor, I can remember that, uh, we just entered into an agreement a year ago, so we just started this program.
Yes.
And I feel like it is progressing, and, uh, and so I'd make a motion that we, uh, continue this agreement. A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue this, uh, agreement with, through the chamber, as Manager Ross, uh, explained. Any questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is the acknowledging the T C R S, the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System rate effective July first, this is something I think that we do every year.
It, it's a, it's an annual event, um, this, this reaches your agenda, and we receive the recommended contribution, uh, from T C R S. It's a, it's the state retirement system that local governments are able to opt into. State actuaries make a recommended, recommendation for the contribution level. And for our eligible employees, uh, our general employees, the recommended rate is four point seven six percent. And for public safety officers, it, it's higher than that, it's eight point two six percent.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Can we have a motion to accept the accepted rate and a second of T C R S at the four point seven six for general employees and eight point two six for public safety? Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. Did you get that?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Next is, um, authorizing certain facilities and maintenance departments items and equipment to be considered surplus, I think Mark supplied us the list. Anything added to that list that we sent to workshop?
No.
Any, what's the pleasure of counsel?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any questions about any of that equipment from Mark, or, um, that list was supplied and went over at the workshop, so. Okay, no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Get it out of here, Mark. Uh, next item is authorizing the purchase of a twenty twenty-two Ford Transit Connect XL, this is to be taken from the drug fund and used in the police department.
I'll make a motion to read, accept that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this purchase, is there any questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Last one in our resolutions is the annual appropriated contributions. And you did have one in your packet that had the wrong T C, T C A code listed, so an updated one has been, it was loose, handed to you loose in your, so the only change to it was the Tennessee code annotated number was changed to reflect the accurate T C A number. So nothing changed on the list of contributions that were asked for, and all those have qualified with our, um, requirements, correct? Melissa, all these, you got off the paperwork.
I received confirmation from each one of these on the list, yes.
Okay, I think she has forwarded all that to counsel for their review, so what's the pleasure of counsel?
I'll make a motion to this, please.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the annual appropriated contributions, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, just to make sure that, um, this resolution is just to give our budget folks the numbers, and that the real appropriation will be later when we vote on the budget, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, because we still have a requirement to publicize them in the local newspaper prior to appropriation.
Yeah, this doesn't mean they're gonna get a check right away, right?
And it's the second, it's, is, when is, when is distribution?
And it's the second, it's, is, when is, when is distribution, if we prove it in the budget? Is that a media? Are we delaying it? Would, would we ever decide on that?
So, in, in past history, we have, um, written a check upon a request from an organization. They have, they are required to present an invoice in addition to the other documentation to me. And that's when they, when they present that invoice, so there's not a certain time of the fiscal year. It's when they.
So our, our budget approves the appropriation. Does it also approve the dispersals? Is it required a separate vote?
Um, that's not required separately.
Yeah, I think what's in the past is, we approved in the budget, the budget gets approved. I guess they're notified that it was approved, and then they correspond with an invoice, and then we cut them a check.
Yes.
And I think, I know there was some discussion about waiting and let's see if we have the money, but I, I personally think these, they, they have a budget they need to form as well, you know, so. I think they need, they need to realize that, because they're getting the money and they can request it, and that's when we send them a check, when they request it. Okay, any discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, so we had two no's, okay.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Cardwell.
And Newman.
Okay, so motion passes three, two. Thank you. Department reports. So we'll ask our, our department leaders here. Director Brubaker, do you have anything to report on?
Just one thing, Mayor. I want to point out at that time of year that the, no one's kicking off. Our codes department sent out 11 notices today for overgrown lots, and we'll face y'all, start getting phone calls on that. We, that process has been started today, so don't be on that continuously.
Okay, all right, yeah, I talked to them about a few, and they've taken care of it, so, thank you. Mr. Hogan, you have anything to report on?
Not this time, I think so.
Okay, um, Mark?
I'm sorry.
All right. Kathy, you have anything you want to bring up?
Just that the, uh, LPOA is, uh, got a couple meetings next week. One is to discuss rebranding. There's a committee set, set aside to talk about rebranding the organization. And we also have an events committee set aside now that is going to start talking about future events for the community, not just downtown, but citywide.
Citywide?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Glad to have Planning Commissioner Scott Wilson with us tonight. If some of y'all don't know who Scott is, he's one of our planning commissioners. So he is attending our city council meeting tonight. Thank you, Scott, for your service on planning commission. Uh, any other department leaders I've missed? Think so? Okay, uh, council member reports. Eric, you have anything to report on?
Nope.
Okay.
When's the next recreation meeting? Uh, I don't have that date.
Okay, I'm going to set one, yeah?
No, I don't have the date. I would like to bring up the conversation next workshop about resuming, looking at the recreations there. What we need to do to get the recreation there on.
Put that on the agenda?
Yep.
Okay. All right, uh, Vice Mayor Dixon, you have anything from planning commission?
Uh, we do. We've got a couple. Uh, we had a final plat request for reset division of Tennessee National Pod 13A. Have technical design of the owner of Tennessee National. And just for the final plat, uh, that was approved. And then, uh, we had a preliminary subdivision plat request for the Oak at Sparrow Valley, which is on River Road and Matlock Bend. Uh, Apcat, Apcat and property owner was CHM Homes. And, uh, that was for seventy-four lots, eighty-one, eighty-one acres. And that was also approved.
Okay, anything else? For the planning commission? Okay. Councilmember Cardwell, you have something for tourism, I guess, maybe?
Yeah, um, the tourism, uh, is it a council?
It's a committee.
Committee met, and, um, just discussed a few items. A, uh, the biggest thing I'd like everybody to take a look at is go to the, the website. Um, they spent a lot of time and money on rebranding, uh, tourism in, uh, Loudoun County, and awarding events on the, uh, the website. So, uh, number one, it helps them with the, the, the traffic, number hits they get. But, uh, a lot of good, good ideas and things coming out of the, the tourism, and hopefully can be incorporated in with Kathy's doing with the downtown. On the, uh, the other side, the, uh, Loudoun Utility Board met tonight. Um, safety report, we talked about a near miss that, uh, we had, and they're still, uh, researching and investigating that. LUB also authorized a strategic planning session, uh, with a different organization and actually paying, uh, thirteen thousand dollars for that one, for the complexity of the utility. We awarded a bid for labor material to, uh, upgrade the district substation, the one that's on Merrimott Road. It's at the corner of Merrimott and what's the other street?
King.
King Street. So that, uh, uh, that substation will probably triple in size. We approved change order five for the twenty-four inch water transmission line across the, uh, the river. We approved a second change order for the line replacements, uh, water line replacements going through town. We approved a request, uh, for the contractor to, uh, continue the treatment of the water treatment plant expansion. Uh, we also, uh, approved the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System Rate, and we established the new gas rate at one oh five, and that's all I have from LUB.
Okay, thank you. There's a lot of stuff going on with Loudon Utilities, as, as, as Councilmember Cardwell said, so there'll be a lot more to report on there with project. Councilmember Webb, have you anything with historic zoning? Y'all didn't have a meeting, did you, or did you?
Yes, sir, we did on Wednesday, April the fifth.
Okay.
Uh, we approved two applications for certificate of appropriateness. One of them at 400 Grove Street, the owners there wanted to, uh, put up some new awnings. If you saw the existing awnings, you'd, you'd agree with me that anything would be an improvement. Uh, just to clarify where that building is, it's, uh, the only thing I ever remember being in there was the savings and loans, but straight, straight across Grove Street from the liquor store now. And then we had another application for certificate of appropriateness. Uh, Jacob Nelson, who's operating the, uh, Loudoun Historic Theater, they want to change the name to the Lyric Theater, and so they're going to change their sign outside to indicate that it's now the, the Lyric Theater.
They thought it's important to go back and keep the name Lyric, which that's what some people still called it. It didn't ever, they might have changed on the front of the sign, but still people called it the Lyric. So that was approved as well, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Quick question for you. You're talking about which one, the first one for the awnings, which building was that?
You know where the liquor store is with Oposse, but straight across the street, that building that would be on the corner there.
On the other corner of BBT.
Is that the one owned by the county?
No, no, no. If you were at the front door of the liquor store, that building, your top one, that is over to your left on the corner. This one's over to the, the right corner. Like I said, I, I don't.
And which one in there?
The county's still leasing it right now for storage. The county's still got a contract for lease, um.
So the county bought one side and leasing the other?
Yeah, currently, they were leasing, they were leasing 400 Grove Street right after the fire. They've been leasing it the whole time. So I'm assuming they'll eventually move everything they're storing in there over to the, the BBT, but we'll see. But there's some, the owners of that want to, they'll probably come back for a, another certificate of appropriateness. They want to take some of the brick out and make a storefront there, which I think would really help that, uh, in the future.
Those are the same folks I don't know, Bowman and Porter's building.
Right.
Old Harbor.
Oh, the blue.
The blue, yes, sir.
They have some, they have some plans for it, but they want to get up, and as Councilmember Webb said, the, the awnings are pretty much dry rotted.
Yeah, and I didn't finish that, just to tell you, they're going to put out, uh, awnings on there that are identical ones on the liquor store, just plain black.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay, just one announcement before we go into executive session. There is a cleanup day scheduled for this Saturday, April 29th. Uh, nine o'clock here at the municipal building. We'll go out, and if you would like to come and help us clean up our community, of course, nine to twelve, uh, here at, uh, we'll provide all the stuff for you best, trash bags, grippers, all those kind of things. So, um, that's something we're planning on this, this Saturday, nine AM. Yes, I'm going to, okay, right. And, uh, we have, we have filled the appointment, the last appointment for the Historic Advisory Board, and that appointment was for a planning commissioner to fill that role. And, uh, Tim Henley has agreed to accept that position. So I don't necessarily think we need to vote on that. I think it's still, it's pretty much.
Just by consent?
Yeah, by consent. Uh, it was, it was suggested that a planning commissioner be on there. He's agreed to serve. That's who they've talked to. So it's just more, more or less a matter of, of information that he has agreed to serve. Let's go ahead and, as far as anniversaries, Ben Everett, one year, one year, Loudoun Police Department. Macklin Russell, seven years, facility and maintenance. Jeremy Freeman, fifteen years, facility and maintenance. Andy Disney, seventeen years, Loudoun Fire Department. Uh, with the utilities, Andy Belcher, that's, two of these worked with the city and transferred over to the utilities. So Andy Belcher has twelve years total. He's currently at the wastewater treatment plant. So is Lee Ramsey. He's, he was hired as the city owner. He's been also twelve years wastewater treatment plant now. And then the, the most senior tenured person this month is Don Watson, twenty-three years customer service at LUB. So if you have some birthdays, we'll do them real quick, and then we'll go to executive session, and we'll adjourn after that.
We can do them now. Okay, we, in the administration department, we had Bobby Beenhem, Fe- February 29th. Megan Hill, February 11th. Police Department, Joseph Finch, February 15th. Chase Lane, February 25th. Brendan Nix, February 6th. Billy Birdie, February 29th. Fire Department, Jacob Turblefield, February 30th. Public Works, Ricky Castle, February 6th. Brandon Hill, February 28th. Electric Department, Audrey Cable, February 6th. Rodney Smallen, February 13th. Taylor Watson, February 22nd. Water Plant, Ty Davis, February 10th. Customer Service, Greg Kinsley, February 1st. And miscellaneous services, council member James Webb, February 14th.
Now, was he supposed to do in March or February?
Or April.
It was all April. Everybody that assisted was April.
You said February.
I can't see that. I apologize.
I can confirm.
I'm over the house right now.
Because we're in, we're in April. That threw you off, huh?
We forgot about that. Did you change your birthday again?
We're going to, uh, call and take an exception at seven oh three. We'll be back in just a few minutes. You're welcome to stay. Have a call back door. It'll be just a few minutes. Thank you, buddy. Do you stay with it, buddy?